So let's call a meeting to order and let me do the usual opening. Uh, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
Mary Stone?
Yes.
Scott Kinter? Scott, I think you're still trying to connect.
Yeah.
And Steve Van Jones?
Yes.
And town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Uh, Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
And Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
And anticipated speakers and presented presenters on the agenda, please respond. Attorney William Henny?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, sir.
And we're expecting Ian Burns from MVPC. I don't see him on yet. Martha, do you?
No, he's not here yet.
No. And also Steve Sawyer from uh, GM two.
Yep, not yet.
Okay. So this March twentieth twenty twenty four open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, which extends the governor's March twelfth twenty twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until March thirty one twenty twenty five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So long as reasonable access, uh, public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Uh, for this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening uh, by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to HTTP colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S and entering meeting ID number eight three two seven one four one three zero five six. Passcode one zero eight seven nine zero or by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are particularly uh, are participating, excuse me, by video and or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at WWW dot T N C T V dot org and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or on your phone, uh, uh, star six to toggle mute or unmute uh, when you're not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please, uh, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through a Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants, to raise your hand hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on their participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question to make a comment. I will afford the applicant, the participant, or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they'll be noted for the record and again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. Finally, please note that each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So turning to the agenda now, the first item on the agenda is an A and R submission uh, from Attorney Henny. Uh, this is a re-submission of an A and R plan for proposed a lot line change between forty four Fatherland Drive, map R eighteen lot fifty four and forty two Fatherland Drive, map R eighteen lot fifty three. The owner applicants of forty four Fatherland Drive are Patrick T. Shea and Mercedes R. Shea, Living Trust Mercedes and Patrick Shea trustees. And the owner of forty two Fatherland Drive, uh, Frances M. and Carol J. Orlandi. And I understand this is on to, um, we've seen this once before. I understand it's on to correct, uh, uh, an error in the original filing. So Attorney Henny?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give you a little quick background here, my name is Bill Heaney. My office is on eighty six Dodge Street in Beverly and I represent Patrick and Mercedes Shea individually, as well as Patrick and Mercedes Shea as trustees of the Patrick T. Shea and the Mercedes R. Shea Living Trust. Uh, we were before you twice last fall. A very thorough review of the A and R plan, I might add. In in December, the A and R plan was approved. And what we weren't aware of at the time was that in November, the Shays were also working with a law firm to do some estate planning. And on November seventeenth, they transferred their property to a, to a, a living trust. So when my office got around to recording the plan that was approved, we did a little due diligence. We discovered that we had the wrong owners of record on your plan. We contacted Martha. After a brief conversation, we decided that the best course of action would be to bring the plan back before you tonight, which is what we've done. It is the exact same plan that uh, was presented to you that was dated twelve eighteen two thousand twenty three. We now have a revised plan and the only change changes on that plan are in the top left corner with the uh, owners of record of forty four Fatherland Drive being Patrick and Mercedes Shea as trustees of the trust and their new deed reference from November one, the property is transferred into their trust. It is, it is our hopes that we can make it light work, light work of this and just approve essentially the exact same plan that was approved last December.
Good, thank you. Martha, before I turn to the board members, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I think Bill's recapped it very well. I don't know if Bill, do you have the plan to pull up on your screen or?
I, I don't know if I can share. Let me, let me look and see why we're um, where we're looking.
And the board members have it. Um, I'm happy to share it or if you think it's not necessary, we can just let it go.
If you could share it, that might be, if I open my screen, it's going to show everything else from the file, I think.
Okay. Just bear with me for a second. It'll take me.
Martha, while you do that, I, I'd just like to note for the record and for the minutes that uh, uh, Scott Kinter has been able to uh, join us. Scott, welcome.
Sorry, it's taking me a second here.
I, I now have it, but I have a multiple screen, so I can try to share my screen if you like, Martha.
I've, I've got it. I think I can do it. Hold on just a sec.
Yes, that's correct. That's the revised plan.
Okay.
Uh, I, I believe this is just a lot line adjustment, uh, Bill, if you could just, uh, run us through that quickly.
Oh, so in, in December, what we reviewed was uh, forty two Fatherland Drive, which is the Orlandi property, is transferring a little over twenty nine hundred square feet to forty four Fatherland Drive in the back. It's known as lot three or shown as lot three on this plan. Um, it does not create, in both lots remain conforming lots. And it was reviewed in detail with you in December. The only changes on this plan today are up in the top left corner where the uh, record owner of forty four is the trust and the new deed reference from November. Other than that, this is the identical plan from last December.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me turn to the board member's speech. Do you have any questions?
I do not, thanks.
No. Uh, Woody, any questions?
No, seems straightforward. Thank you, Bill. Oh, thank you, Larry.
Okay, Mary, any questions?
Well said. Thanks, Larry.
Uh, Scott, any questions?
I have no questions.
And Steve, any questions?
Thank you, no.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. It looks pretty straightforward. Um, that being the case, um, would anyone care to make a motion uh, to endorse the A and R plan entitled Division Plan of Land of forty two and forty four Fatherland Drive in Newbury, Massachusetts, prepared for Patrick and Mercedes Shea by EPS Associates LLC, revised date March four twenty twenty four.
I'd like that motion.
Thank you, Woody. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? Then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Um, okay, anything further on this?
Uh, I have none, Mr. Chairman. I'll thank you for your time and sorry we had to come back before you tonight.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, um, moving on. Well, let's see, it's seven eleven. Um, uh, we can go to liaison reports before we get to our public hearings. Uh, anything from the select board, Martha?
Uh, major item is they met on March twelfth and voted that night to, um, well, they voted the warrant and it has since been posted. So rested a business that night really had to do primarily with the business licenses and liquor licenses.
Okay, thanks, Martha. Uh, for ZBA, uh, they met on the fourteenth, uh, had a very busy night. Um, they voted favorably on special permits and findings for thirty six Northern Boulevard, forty Northern Boulevard and ten Fordham Way. Also continued three public hearings for two thirty High Road, seventy six Northern Boulevard and three, uh, River Street. Also, uh, of interest, they uh, voted to extend the uh, uh, deadline to begin construction for that fifty five R Pearson Drive. That's the forty B uh, project off Pearson Drive. Uh, the reason, uh, because of the uh, protracted litigation, uh, which has been, uh, which has been resolved and they're, they're moving forward with construction. That's all I have for ZBA. Uh, Woody, anything from conservation?
Excuse me. Um, conservation met last night. There were three certificates of compliance. Um, some requests uh, for septics and nothing that really pertain to us, but uh, it was a busy evening, but it was a lot of, uh, old things and new things, so. That's all.
Thank you, Woody. Um, Martha, MBPC?
Uh, the MBPC Commissioners Meeting is tomorrow, so I'll be able to report on that at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks, Martha. We still got a couple of minutes to go before we can get into the public hearings. I don't think there's anything else we can do in the meantime. You'll probably need more than a minute for your director's report, Martha.
Um, maybe, not a lot, but probably more, more than a minute.
We can hold off at seven fourteen now, so just give it a minute.
And I would like to note that Ian has, Ian has joined us.
Oh, good, good. Okay, it's seven fifteen. Uh, so the first public hearing on the agenda is, this is actually a re-notice public hearing for the proposed uh, new MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. It's an amendment to Article Four Regulations of Overlay Districts to add a new bylaw, Section ninety seven four G MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District or MCMOD, to allow multifamily housing as a right in this overlay district in accordance with Section three A of the Zoning Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty A and related amendments to Attachment One Zoning Overlay and Resources District Map to show the proposed and proposed MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. Um, this is a re-notice hearing because we've been uh, advised by town council that because there have been substantive uh, amendments to the proposed uh, uh, bylaw amendment, um, uh, since it was first, uh, published, uh, that a republication and reopening, um, or I should say a new uh, public hearing needs to be convened. Um, so with that, I'd ask our clerk, uh, Woody Knight, if you would read the public hearing notice, Woody?
Yes. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, March twentieth twenty twenty four at seven fifteen P M, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing remotely via Zoom pursuant to MGL C forty A to consider proposed amendments as further revised in additions to the code of the Town of Newbury, Chapter ninety seven zoning as follows. Amendment to Article four Regulations of Overlay Districts to add a new bylaw, MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, to allow multifamily housing as a right in this overlay district in accordance with Section three A of the Zoning Act, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty eight. And related related amendment to Attachment One Zoning Overlay and Resource Districts Map to show the proposed MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District. The text and maps of these proposed amendments are on file with the town clerk and in the planning office, twelve Kentways, Suite one oh one, Byfield, Mass. It may be viewed on the Planning Board section of the town's website at HTTPS semicolon slash slash WWW dot TownofNewbury.org slash planning. Board slash pages slash proposed zoning and regulations amendments. For more information or to obtain a digital or hard copy of the proposed amendments, contact the planning office by phone at nine seven eight four six five oh eight six two extension three one two or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. In accordance with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, which extends the governor's March twelfth twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March thirty first of twenty twenty five. The hearing is being conducted remotely. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed, proposed zoning amendments are invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated time from their computer, tablet, or smartphone at HTTPS semicolon slash slash US O two web dot zoom dot U S slash J slash eight three two seven one four one three oh five six. Passcode one oh eight seven nine oh or by telephone by calling one nine two nine two oh five six oh nine nine U S and using meeting ID number eight three two seven one four one three oh five six. Or maybe watch the meeting live on local access cable channel nine or at WWW dot T N C T V dot org. And it was published in the Newbury Port Daily News on March sixth and on March thirteenth of twenty twenty four.
All right, thank you, Woody. Um, we've had, um, uh, you know, prior, um, uh, sessions of the hearings on the, on the previously, uh, uh, noticed, um, public hearing. We've also had a number of outreach, um, public outreach sessions. Um, and I suspect, uh, most everyone who's tuned in tonight, uh, is familiar with this, but in case it's new to anyone, I'll just give a very brief recap. Um, in twenty twenty, the legislature, uh, passed the so-called MBTA Communities Act. Uh, and it, uh, it relates to communities with a transit stop or communities adjacent to a community with a transit stop, which of course includes Newbury. And we're required, uh, these communities are required to adopt an ordinance of bylaw permitting multifamily housing with certain minimum uh, gross density. Um, the planning department, uh, Martha and Kristen have been working very closely with Ian Burns and Kayla, uh, Rennie from, uh, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, um, uh, who are on board as our consultants. So we have Ian Burns with us tonight and I'm going to ask Ian to, uh, give us a brief, uh, synopsis of, of the, yeah, proposed bylaw and the legislation and the proposed bylaw. Be with Ian.
Thank you very much. Happy to. Glad to be with you all again tonight. Um, uh, for everyone that, that I have not met yet that's on the call, my name's Ian Burns with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, as the chairman mentioned. Uh, for those that are unaware, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission were a public agency that serves the fifteen cities and towns in the Merrimack Valley region, so Newbury being one of those. And we are assisting Newbury as well as nine other communities in this region with in-depth support for MBTA Communities Compliance. With that, I will share a couple of slides so that folks can follow along kind of with where we are today with Newbury's proposed bylaw. All righty. So I'm going to hop right into it and if it works for you, Mr. Chairman, at the end, I'll stop for questions unless any members of the board want to ask anything throughout.
All right, Ian, thank you.
So just hopping right into it, we're going to zoom in on the map in just a minute here, but wanted to give you a big overview of where we're considering these, uh, by right multifamily districts in Newbury. So you'll see this is the entire town and we've zoomed in on a couple of insets, but we'll take a farther zoom in on future slides. We have two main areas of town that are being considered. One is the North District up here, and so you have Route One, Newbury Port Rotary and Commuter Rail Station right here. Um, and then we have the South District down here nearby Field. Uh, an important thing to note and something we'll be kind of, uh, mentioning throughout the presentation is that you'll see there is a North A District in blue here and a South A District in blue down here. And then a North B District in yellow and a South B District in yellow. Um, those are the same letters and colors because they have the same dimensional requirements. And so although we have a north section and a south section of town, um, you'll notice that the dimensional requirements or the zoning parameters in the Bs, the yellows and the As, the blues are, are, are different. And so they have the same if they're the same color and we'll talk about that in just a second here. So this is zooming in on that North District, so this symbol is symbolizing the, the Newbury Port Commuter Rail Station up here. You have Route One right here and you have Newbury Elementary right here to the right of the B. Um, so we have A and B districts, as we'll talk about, uh, in a couple of slides, the B districts um, have lower densities and have more strict parameters for zoning compared to the A districts, which allow for a bit more density and have, uh, a little bit looser regulations in terms of those dimensional requirements. Um, a couple of reasons, I think some of you may have heard, we, we floated around some of these districts, primarily the access to the commuter rail station and some good benefits being right near Route One for efficient transportation options. And the B being near Newbury, Newbury Elementary, we thought was a great idea um, for any potential families with children to be able to be in walking distance to the elementary school. So zooming back out, we just looked at the North Districts here. Now we're going to go down to the South Districts in Byfield um, and looking at those two. So here's the Newbury South, uh, those districts. So we have A, which is right over, uh, Kentway, the, the plaza where Town Hall is. And then we have B over here, which is off of Central Street. And that's behind, uh, the, the fire station is right here for folks who are familiar. And Central Street goes over ninety five, which is located right here. Again, we have an A and a B district because the A allows for a little bit more density as compared to the B, which is, uh, lower density and greater setbacks required in the actual, uh, zoning. So to that point, you can take a look at the dimensional requirements here again. These As are referring to North A is the one right on Route One that we just saw and South A is over Kentway, the strip mall. North B being next to Newbury Elementary and South B being on Central Street. Uh, the sub-districts, North A and South A, those have a three-story maximum building height and the setbacks are fifty foot for the front yard and twenty five feet for the side and rear yards. You'll also notice that the max building coverage is fifty percent on the parcels on the lots themselves. And we are requiring a minimum open space of forty percent, uh, with any future development if the development were to happen. Um, the max density that is allowed there, that is in units per acre, is seventeen units per acre. Then taking a look at the Bs, those, those lower densities that I was referring to, um, same minimum lot size required if anyone was to, to subdivide any of the lots. The max building height is two point five stories, so a little bit less than what is in the A districts. The setbacks, this is what, where one of the major differences is, we still have the fifty foot front yard, but sixty feet for the side and rear yards. Uh, that's really in an effort to make sure that we have some distance between any abutting neighbors and potential future development. Um, the max building coverage is at forty percent, so ten percent less than the A districts. And the minimum open space required is fifty percent, so that's ten percent more than in the A districts. Then the maximum density, really in an effort to make sure that there isn't anything too intrusive in these neighborhoods, is that at eight units per acre cannot be any higher than that for a future development. All of this zoning, for folks who may be unaware, is proposed as an overlay district, which essentially just means that all of these uses are allowed on top of what is currently allowed in these areas. So all the underlying zoning still remains. A developer could choose if they wanted to, to do single-family homes or whatever it is zoned for. Um, or they could choose to use the overlay district and put in multifamily housing that aligns with these parameters. I did want to mention, uh, well, first I just wanted to show this example. We showed this last time, but this is, uh, Oak Ridge. Some of you may be familiar. This is Main Street in Newbury. This is a, a density of actually eleven and a half units an acre. So when we, when we talk about the B districts being set at eight units an acre, that's less density than what we see here. So we wanted to give you a quick visual of what you might experience in town and, and that densities can actually be a bit higher than what you might expect just by looking at the structure. Uh, two things important to mention. First affordability requirements, we are putting in a requirement that ten percent of any future development that has ten units or more be designated as affordable. For those who are unaware, um, an affordable unit in this case refers to housing um, that has incomes making eighty percent or less of what's called the area median income. So if you're making underneath whatever the area median income is, Newbury, if you're making eighty percent of that total, then you qualify for affordable housing, um, under these guidelines. What does that mean example? Exactly, in Newbury, uh, means for a family of four, a household income can be up to about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And for a one-person household, the maximum income is eighty two thousand dollars. So it is still a relatively uh, good-sized income, but when you're in a community like Newbury and in what's considered the greater Boston metro area, median income is pretty high. And so eighty percent of that, um, um, is sits around one eighteen for a family of four. The last thing I'll mention, and we try to mention this as much as possible for folks, just because this is by right zoning, does not mean that a developer can flout any, uh, state or federal regulations around environmental protections. So everything still applies here. They have to adhere to Title Five Septic Regulations, Wetlands Protection Act. Um, they have to make sure that they can make it work within the utility and infrastructure capacity onsite. If not, they have to build it onsite. And they also have to adhere to any, uh, state policies around stormwater management preventing, uh, more runoff than there may be there currently. That is all I have for slides. If anybody wants, I can go back to any of the maps as we talk, but I will hand it back over uh, to you, Mr. Chairman, for what, where you want to go next.
Thank you, Ian. Um, I think next what I'd like to do, well, first, let me, um, ask the board members if, um, they have any questions for Ian. Uh, Peter?
I have no questions.
First time we've seen this.
Yeah, no questions. I think this is the, a good, uh, wrap up, a good summation of what the efforts have been, Ian. Thanks very much. I think it's very concise.
Uh, Woody, uh, any questions for Ian, comments?
No, no questions. Thank you, Ian. Again, thank you.
Uh, Mary, I'll turn to you.
All good, Larry. Thank you, Ian.
Okay, and Scott?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Ian, and, uh, appreciate all your input.
Okay, and Steve?
No questions and thanks for the presentation.
No questions, and thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, it was very, very concise. Informative for anyone who may be new to this. When we last saw this on March 6th, we reviewed a redlined version of the proposed bylaw. And I think Martha, if you can put that up on the screen and just, I think it might be helpful if we could just take another look at that again to remind everyone of the substantive changes.
Right, so the last time that we reviewed this, it's been, we've been reviewing incremental changes going along. And so this time I'm going to go through it, highlighting each change that's been made since the, since the first notice of the first public hearing, just to really highlight what's been, what's different from this version, between this version and the last. Some of these are changes that came out of discussions with MBPC as our consultant, and some of them are the result of redlines and edits, suggested edits from Town Council. So in the, at the beginning of the bylaw, the first change we made was to add some language about what the bylaw will do in addition to being compliant with the the 3A of the zoning act. So this was to increase the production of a range of housing units to meet existing and anticipating housing needs and to increase the diversity of housing and provide, excuse me, sorry, provide more housing choice to meet the needs of residents of different age groups, household compositions, and income levels. Scrolling down, the next change was Town Council advised putting in some language referring this to site plan review. I think one thing that does need to be noted is that even though this is allowed by right, it is something that will be going, again, sorry, through site plan review with the planning board, so there will be a review process for any application that comes before the board. Town Council had removed the word waiver from this definition of as of right, and later has added a provision regarding waiver, which we'll get to in a second. In terms of the dimensional standards, as Ian just mentioned, we added the density caps for the A and B sub-districts, so 17 for, 17 units per acre for the A sub-districts and eight units per acre for the B sub-districts. Town Council made some amendments to the language regarding the affordability, just noting that the affordable housing restriction needs to be recorded at the Essex County Registry of Deeds prior to issuance of a building permit, and that a copy has to be provided to the planning board and the building commissioner. Going down further, and there's a section on site plan review, and Town Council added this phrase in accordance with Section 97 point dash nine, which is our site plan review, and noted that again here. Also, in accord with guidance from Town Council, we added a paragraph here, the application process, which is carried over directly from our site plan review rules and regulations. Going down, going down further, there's been some, quite a bit of change to the Section 8 Design Standards and Guidelines. Originally, these were put forward more as guidelines, and this has been tightened up to to make it clear that these are design standards that an applicant will need to be, will need to adhere to, but there is language in here a little further about waiver. So where it says guidelines, in most cases, it's been changed to standards. And then further down is the provision that Town Council added, saying the planning board may waive the design standards provided that the, that the board determines that such waivers will substantially further the purposes and intent of this section. Then as far as the standards are concerned themselves, the first one, we added site design because some of these standards are related to overall site design, not just open space and landscaping. Change should to shall in many instances. For the landscaped areas, we noted that not only should they be planted with drought tolerant species, but they should be species that don't require any automatic irrigation systems. Added that planting shall be native species, not included on the Massachusetts prohibited plant list. Added requirements regarding light levels and color temperature of the lighting, and clarified that parking and circulation on the site should be organized so as to reduce the amount of impervious surface. We made some minor changes in in discussion about the placement of of the buildings and added some language regarding minimizing the visual impact of the development from the street by locating lower buildings closer to the street, taller buildings farther back on the site. And we made some changes to the section on building massing, articulation, and architecture. In particular, again, changing should to shall, added some language regarding roof pitches to make it clear that it should be typical of roof pitches found in this area. Changed entrances to facades. Clarified building materials. Changing it from our preferred to should be used, removed a reference to vinyl and plastic synthetic siding, since that's really been addressed above in terms of the preferred or the the materials that should be used. We had a section on resource efficiency, which is still in here, but has been rewritten to clarify those requirements regarding building orientation, electric vehicle charging stations, use of LED and dark sky compliant light fixtures and technologies to minimize water demand throughout the site design. Finally, sections have been added regarding the decision process. The decisions shall be made within 80, 180 days of filing the complete application. Final, final action of the planning board shall be approval based on determination that it complies with the criteria or that it complies subject to site plan and design conditions, modification and restrictions, or disapproval because the application is incomplete. And then sections have been added regarding recording and lapse of the approval once it's been granted, which would be two years after the date of issuance if the work is not complete, but it can be extended. And that again is directly from our site plan review bylaw. So that is the the bylaw as amended through the process over the last several weeks.
Thank you, Martha. I don't have any questions. Before we open it to the public, let me call the board members again. Pete, do you have any questions for Martha, comments?
My only comment is I think it's been a good work in progress. Very impressed with MBPC's participation in our staff working together to to bring this to. That's right.
Thank you, Pete. Woody, do you have anything?
I don't have any questions. I reiterate what Peter just said and then some. There's been a lot of hard work put into this, and I think we have a final draft here, so.
Thanks, Woody. Mary, anything you'd like to add? Did we lose?
No, I'm sorry, I was muted. No, Larry, sorry.
Scott, anything?
No, I don't have anything other than Greg, Rick, Ron, and Percy. There's been a lot of changes. You know, on the, yeah.
Scott, I'm having a little trouble understanding you. I don't know if anyone else is.
I am, I am as well.
I have no questions, Larry.
Okay, thank you. And Steve?
All set, thank you.
Okay, Martha, do we have any written comments from the public?
No, we don't.
Okay, and I think you can probably put that down. And do we have any raised hands from the public?
Jack Rebicki has raised his hand.
Okay, Jack, go ahead.
Hey, good evening, Larry. Good evening, Martha. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time always on this effort. It's been a long one. I submit, I like Peter's use of the word, this is an aggressive plan. The nature of the maximum build-out proposed would impact this town tremendously under whatever timeframe a developer would so choose to undertake the provisions offered. In particular, the by right component is very intimidating because under the same circumstance, the developer could propose this same type development and do it under our special permit provisions, which allows us more oversight, more stay in in the matter that we will cede under the terms of by right. So it's not as if a developer can't do exactly these same densities, but the by right component i- is bothersome. In particular, the language that you mentioned, Martha, that ultimately you can waive some or all provisions after a planning board review is slightly disturbing because the nature of the by right would allow him to propose and then, you know, not necessarily be held to the standard that's being set. And I don't, that's troublesome language. I hadn't seen that language before. I also say that under the law, to stay compliant for the grants that may be called into question, we really only need to be compliant for 154 units. That would mean one parcel under the 17-unit density in the North A parcel, for instance, the old auto salvage yard, would make us entirely compliant for all the MBTA laws going forward. To try, that we're now couching multiple properties by right and giving seeding a lot of oversight, possibly, I think needs to be, needs to be visited a little more, and I think for the moment, staying compliant with the law by passing a parcel that gives us that compliance while we in turn watch the impacts of this law in other towns and other fabrics of community that this would do, our schools, just a lot of things would change in the town under the maximum build-out possibilities. And even half those possibilities would change us. And I talked to Ian at length, and thank you, Ian, for the conversation, particularly about the population trends, the numbers, not necessarily the startup person, you know, the first-time home buyers or the elderly population that's growing, but the trend that the MBPC demonstrates through other charts that it, it's 2050, that it's proposed we could have a population as low as 4,500. And those are the documents from the MBPC. So there's a lot of conflict here, and I I appreciate the time, but I think we don't want to, and I'll use Pete's word again, this is aggressive. Aggressive for our small town, aggressive for a town of 6,500. I think compliance is in order, but the by right component or the balance of what you're asking, I think, is piggybacking something that doesn't need to be done at this time, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jack. If I understand your points, your main points is you're concerned obviously about the the by right component, which in order to comply with the MBTA statute, it has to be by right, at least that's my understanding. And Ian or Martha will invite you to correct me.
No, I entirely understand that, that the by right, but the by right component only needs to take, needs to encompass 154 units by the algorithm offered by the MBPC. And that would make, again, the singular lot, I believe, of our, the old auto salvage yard under the 17-density proposed, that would make us MBTA 3A compliant. And then the rest of it is the add-on.
Yeah, I think if you take the 10,000-foot view, you're absolutely right, Jack, but I think that there are conditions on the ground that are going to greatly limit the number of units and actually can can go into these, you know, into any of these locations, but but your point is understood and well-taken. Any other?
No, no, I would like to, I would like to say something, and I don't know, perhaps Ian might in response to to what Jack said, if I may. Jack, have I understood you correctly? I think you were suggesting that we allow multifamily housing by special permit now. Is that?
Believe, I believe under the, you read under the law provision, I wrote it down here, the definitions at the beginning of the law that you're proposing, I wrote letter E, and you make the point of the difference between what's available now versus what we'll cede if we give by by right.
So I'm actually looking back at the definitions right now, but currently under our zoning in Newbury.
But the E is important, the E is very important because we're going to change exactly what we're discussing here. I think the people should read that and or revisit it. You had it up before, please.
Yeah, no, I see that. But the difference is here, we don't actually allow multi-housing by special permit except in two districts, and that's for up to four, up to four units or as an OSRD. So this is not, this is not permitting as of right. It's, it's not, it's not allowing as of right something that we currently allow by special permit.
Right, so, so again, the the nature of the oversight of, you know, a developer asking for increased density on, say, the, you know, either one, you know, pickup property, the Byfield property, Enoch or RJ Kelly's property, or the auto salvage yard. If a developer came to you and proposed under the provisions you have now to the planning board, I submit that under the special permit provisions, the zoning board of appeals and the other processes we have, that in fact, a developer could pursue similar, you know, similar densities under the special permit provisions. And what I'm really visiting, Martha, is that's, that's part of the aggressive nature. I submit we're mostly trying to stay compliant with the MBTA 3A provisions, and that means 154 units. If we built out all of the units that you're proposing, we're talking hundreds, much more than 154. I think the calculation's closer to 700, and although it can be said, nobody will ever build that big, the technology going forward may allow for that. There could be an amoeba that allows a septic system to have 100 bedrooms in a day, you know, and that what we look at today is restrictive. In 25 years, by right, could absolutely fit under the density clauses we're building. So again, it's the aggressive nature of of the zoning across town for the moment. I'm not saying we can't visit it and add that later, and we can. I'm just saying to do it all at once isn't necessary because of the, of the tremendous impact possible under every circumstance. That's all I'm, that's what I'm mostly concerned about. We want to stay compliant, but that's a lot. If you could, if you could articulate in the the theory, I think Ian did it with us. I mean, we're talking 700 units or so or more in a town that only has how many now? We're talking about 25 or 30% more than we have now. That's schools, that's service, that's infrastructure, that's a lot more than the ideal opportunity of creating more housing where affordable is $700,000 plus. That's a hard thing, me and Ian, and we've all talked about it. So again, I go back to, it's very aggressive to ask for all this all at once by right when we can do it under 154 units out of respect for everybody going forward while we keep those provisions alive and extend them at future annual town meetings if it seems to work out in the public's favor. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jack. One, before I let you go, I was negligent. I should have asked you for your name and address for the record, so if you could just give us that.
No, I apologize. That was my fault. Jack Rebicki, 37 Larkin Road.
Thank you, Jack. I see Leslie Matthews has her hand up, Martha.
Yes.
Leslie, if you would state your name and address, please.
Leslie Matthews, 111 Main Street. From my understanding, what we are doing at this point in time is establishing the zoning, new zoning bylaws so that we can go forward in the near future to to establish these different locations to build up our affordable housing. Am I incorrect on this, or is that what we're, that's what our game plan is at the moment, and then we can go forward?
I'm not sure I quite understand your question.
Well, the, it's. Well, the court, the, it, it's all of this has to go before town meeting, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so some of the discussion that we're having is this all has to be in place before we can start making decisions on, um, some of the different districts. That we have to change the zoning bylaws in order to move forward, to go into the different districts, to put the affordable housing, um, it on the map to, to go forward with it.
Well, if, if it passes, and I should point out that the warrant has already been posted.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, it has the article as we've seen tonight on there, and we'll, we'll get to our options in a few minutes. But yeah, if this passes, then the, uh, the multifamily housing would be, um, permitted, um, in the, in the four designated districts with, uh, uh, you know, the, uh, uh, the limitations that, that uh, density limitations between the A and B districts. It, does that answer your question?
It does, and let me go on to just further say, if you could just make a, a few clarifications. Uh, because there are questions, uh, different people are asking why the select board went forward with putting this on the warrant when the planning board really hadn't, um, made a, um, hadn't closed out the public meeting on this and made an absolute decision.
Uh, I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Pete, I'd see your hand is up.
I actually did put my hand up, which rather unusual, there isn't.
Yes, it is.
Uh, so we should break down as, as quickly as possible. Hello, right here, there we go. So I, I want to say a couple of things. Uh, Jack used the word aggressive, and I'm not sure that we were using the word in the same manner, and I think he used it multiple times. I think this is a very significant plan, and what it does in effect, and you have to look at this from a different perspective, it actually protects these parcels because it puts limitations on what can be developed in these parcels when it comes to affordable housing. So taking over what design is going to be, good talking about what the amount of open space is going to, how many can be in a particular district. If a developer could come to us right now, to this town, you know, wanted to be a forty B, let's say they wanted to put one there, or they put one there in all of these districts, we would have no ability to limit or put any type of parameters around what would be developed. I mean, it would just happen and whatever they wanted to do, if they wanted to put four stories in there, they could put four stories in there. We wouldn't be able to limit or, or to, or to quantify what the setbacks would be, what the open space would be. So in effect, we're protecting these parcels which might at some point in time be a target for development, and that's one way that I'm looking at it. The second way is it helps to start the process of addressing some component of affordability. This is not a, a complete affordable project. It's not meant to be a project, and Ian will, will qualify this. What we're, what we're doing is we're we're meeting the requirements of, um, what the law requires, and at the same time, we're protecting, from my perspective, these four parcels as to what can be developed in the future. Without doing something like this, these four parcels would be, they'd be in the pick. If, if, if a developer wanted to come in, they could do whatever they wanted, and they could file an application for the application, and we would have little to no limitations because we haven't met a threshold. I think that's, that's why we're protecting ourselves and doing this type of approach. So that's what I wanted to say to, to Jack's summary. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Pete. Um, we have any other, uh, Leslie?
Yeah, um, Pete kind of summed it up really well for me because, eh, you know, at this point in time, any developer couldn't come in and put in a plan that they would like to do because all of our ducks aren't in a row at the, at, right now. But I see where we're, you know, we're leaning towards port, protecting these good assets that we have. And thanks, Pete, you really summed it up for me.
Yeah, and, and to both of your points, I think, uh, just take, for example, a forty B application, we would have much less control over a forty B. On one of these parcels than we would, uh, with the multifamily zoning, I believe.
Ian, Ian.
Did you want to say something?
Yes, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Um, just wanted to address one point that was made earlier. There was concern about uh, the waiver provision of the bylaw, and I did want to point out that the way that waiver provision is written, and Martha, correct me if I'm wrong. But it essentially allows a waiver only if the applicant is still adhering to the, the spirit or the goal of that section of the bylaw. So it doesn't grant a, a waiver for anything for any reason. The applicant still has to show that they are complying with the intent of that section, um, if they are to be granted a waiver. So I wanted to offer that clarification.
Thank you, Ian. And I'd see another hand, Martha.
Uh, Jack has raised his hand again.
Okay, Jack, go ahead.
Hey, Jack Rebecky, uh, thirty-seven Larkin Road. Um, I just want to, eh, speak to the idea that this law is going to protect forty B parcels is, i- is tough because there are multiple tens of acreages of farmlands around here that could conceivably be bought up under those circumstances. The idea that these would be targeted and you're saving us from them, I don't think is fair. I think that the idea of using forty B to pry us into this on a greater scale isn't necessarily fair. I think forty B would come to pass for a developer regardless of the circumstance and this law would have no bearing on a high road farm being sold and being, you know, carved up. So I, I just want to make that point that, you know, targeted, um, zoning to save our lands, I don't think i- i- is a good message. I, I, I think that we own it as the zoning that it is, or isn't, and, and that's compliance at a hundred fifty-four units is the baby steps I think we're all looking for, and I thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Jack. A- any other public comment, Martha?
I'm not, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any.
All right, if that's the case, then I'd ask the board members, it would seem to me to be appropriate at this point to close the public hearing, at least the public like, uh, comment section of the hearing, then deliberate on what sort of recommendation we want to make on this to uh, the town, uh, at, at town meeting. Uh, does anyone have any other thoughts on that? A hearing done, uh, would, would anyone care to make a motion, uh, to close the public hearing?
Well, so moved.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second? Thank you, I, I think that was Woody I heard first. Thank you, Woody. Um, any discussion on that? Then Pete, how do you vote on the motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Now, Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Uh, Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And Scott, how do you vote on the motion?
I vote yes.
And I, I vote yes as well. So I, I think now it's time for the board to deliberate on what our recommendation is going to be. I, I, I think we have three options. Um, one is to, uh, uh, recommend approval as printed in the, in the warrant. Uh, the other would be to, uh, recommend approval with, um, uh, one or more, uh, amendments such as, uh, for example, to Jack Rebecky's points, I think to cut back and on one or more of these, uh, these, uh, uh, sub-districts. Or the third, of course, would be to simply, uh, 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 move to recommend disapproval. So, uh, Pete, how do, how do you feel about it? Where are we at?
You know, um, Larry, I, 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 I appreciate, uh, what has been, has been proposed, the two types of districts. Um, and I think having a north and a south makes, makes all the sense in the world, tries to address what we're trying to do in regards to transportation and access. I'm comfortable with how the thought process has been. I'm comfortable with how it's been laid out. I'm comfortable with the limitations that have been put into place. Uh, so I would suggest that we go forward with what has been proposed and has been worked at this point in time.
Thank you, Pete. Uh, Woody, do you have anything to add?
I agree. Uh, I, I'm comfortable with option one, and I would go forward with option one. I think that the fourth, north, A and B, north and south is acceptable and reasonable.
Thank you, Woody. Uh, Mary, your thoughts?
Yes, agreed with, uh, Woody and Pete.
Okay, and Scott?
I'm supportive of that.
All right, and Steve?
Yeah, I'm supportive, but I think we ought to be prepared at town meeting to be able to discuss the build out that Jack Rebecky has described as one possible outcome. And again, it may be the purview of the select board to talk about how this proposal was already on the town warrant before we got to, before you got to vote. So I'm just urging us all to be prepared during town meeting.
I, I expect. I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I expect there'll be some lively discussion at town meeting on the subject.
Definitely, definitely.
All right, well, I think what I'm hearing for everyone is there, is that we're in favor of moving forward, uh, to recommend approval uh, of the bylaw as, uh, as it appears in the, uh, uh, the town warrant, uh, the, uh, town meeting warrant. Uh, would anyone care to make a motion to that effect?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, any discussion on the motion? And hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Um, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So thank you, and we appreciate all the, uh, the input we've got, uh, from everyone and all the interest that folks are taking in this because it is an important measure and, uh, we'll, uh, make the appropriate recommendation at town meeting and see where the debate goes. All right, moving on, uh, the next item on the agenda is the proposed amendment to the wireless communications facilities. Wireless Communications Tower District Amendment to Article Four Regulations of Overlay Districts, Section ninety-seven four C Wireless Communications Facilities, Section ninety-four, ninety-seven, four C two A tower use, uh, restrictions to add parcels to the Wireless Communications Tower District, which enables wireless communication services to operate on town mount, tower mounted facilities and related, they did amend it to Attachment One, the zoning overlay and resource districts map to show the expanded wireless communications tower district. So we last, uh, met on this on, um, March sixth. And, uh, I'm sure you'll all recall that there were three parcels under discussion here, two which belong to the, uh, school district on Elm Street, the main campus, and I believe it's one forty-five Elm. And also the, um, DPW facility at one ninety-seven High Road. Um, since we last met on this, we've had two significant developments that I need to share with you. Uh, first of all, it's come to our attention that the, uh, hearing notice um, for the public here, or the notice for the public hearing was defective. Uh, the, um, statute requires that the notice be published in a newspaper, uh, at least twice. Turns out that we only, uh, the second publication never occurred. The paper has taken responsibility for that oversight, but nevertheless, uh, we have a defect in the process. So if we're going to go forward uh, to move this article forward, uh, and it does appear on the town meeting warrant also, uh, as it appears here. We're going to have to re-advertise. The second significant item is that the school district has communicated uh, their wish that we withdraw the two school parcels from consideration under this article. It's too late to withdraw, uh, because as I said, the warrant article is, the warrant has already been posted with the article, uh, including all three parcels. Um, so we need to discuss, uh, our next steps. Um, as I said, town council has advised um, that if we want to go forward with the article, either to move it as written or move it, uh, to amend it in some amended form, we would have to re-advertise, um, and begin the public hearing, uh, um, over again. The other option, uh, if we do nothing, uh, then town meeting would not, uh, 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 be able to, uh, take up this article and would simply be passed over. Uh, and the third option, we can take a vote without re-advertising the public hearing, uh, if we want to, um, uh, uh, recommend to town meeting that the article, uh, that, uh, no action be taken on the art, article at town meeting. Uh, I personally, I favor the last option for a variety of reasons I'm happy to talk about, but let me um, turn to the board members and get your feeling on this, Pete.
Yeah, Larry, uh, considering where we're at right now, I think the, uh, recommendation of no action would be the most appropriate. And I think, uh, after we have a poll, we can maybe discuss a little bit further.
Yeah, um, uh, Woody, your thoughts?
I, I agree, no action be taken, um, option three. Um, and we'd, we'll work on in the future.
So be it. Uh, Mary?
Law process, I think we ought to, uh, abort.
Okay, all right, uh, Scott?
Uh, I'm agreeing with that. Um, thank you.
Yeah, and Steve, your thoughts?
I agree, option three sounds like the best path forward.
Yeah, I think so. I think this needs more study and, and more work and, uh, uh, we've had a, a lot of discussion with the public, we've heard from the neighbors, uh, we've had input from the school committee. And I don't think that, that the, uh, uh, the school district was necessarily ruling out any further action on this, but, uh, then they, uh, my understanding is they want some more time to look at this, and I think we could use more time too. So Martha, um, is there any reason that I, uh, uh, well, it's, no, we don't need to close the public hearing because we don't have a public hearing. Um, so Martha, is there any reason that I couldn't call for a vote, uh, to recommend the town meeting, uh, to take no action on this article?
I don't know of any reason you couldn't.
Okay, uh, do we have that motion?
You have.
Uh, thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, any further deliberation by the board? Out here, Mary none, Pete, how do you vote on the motion of, uh, to recommend no action?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes, yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. And thanks, everyone, all those members of the public that took the time to come out and share their thoughts with us. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. This is continued from February twenty-first for Seven Bittersweet Lane map, U O nine lot, twenty-one B common driveway special permit uh, application. The owner, David W Foley Senior, Nancy J Foley, and the applicant Gage Foley. Um, so I think I, when we last took this up, um, we did review the draft common driveway special permit decision. Um, and I understand that Martha, some issues have arisen regarding, um, uh, the change in ownership of number seven and, uh, uh, who needs to be added or as, or considered an applicant. Maybe you could, you can probably sum it up better than I can.
But I'll try. So as we were, as we were taking another look at the decision and, um, incorporating comments that had been made, it, it, a, a few things kind of came up first. With Gage being the applicant, but the work actually being done on nine and eleven bittersweet for improvement of the common driveway itself, um, we realized that there was actually nothing basically, even though it's all the family, there's, there's nothing authorizing him to submit the application on, on behalf of all of them, and particularly the, the other two property owners. Uh, the other thing that we, in, in, in trying to kind of sort out, and also, um, Nancy and Dave Foley were listed as the owners, but um, we understand that in fact, at, um, at one point, the Foley Family Irrevocable Trust was the owner of seven bittersweet and eleven bittersweet, and the Bittersweet Lane Realty Trust was the owner of nine bittersweet. Um, but Dave and Nancy Foley were noted as the owners, so there was some confusion about that as well. And as we were, um, communicating with Steve and with Gage trying to sort that out, we learned that um, seven bittersweet has since been conveyed to Gage and his wife outright. So in order to, um, actually be able to correctly write the decision and make sure that all the parties and everything are accounted for, we need to kind of get some of that straightened out. And that also then pertains to the, um, the easement document, which right now has the Bittersweet Lane Realty Trust and the Foley Family Irrevocable Trust as being the two parties to this easement. So it's actually three parties. So I don't know if that helps explain the situation, but there were enough questions that, that we felt we really couldn't finalize the, um, the decision appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we've Yeah, I mean, I, I think we've, we've been through the meat of the decision. It's just getting all of our ducks in a row. Steve Sawyer, welcome. Can you help us out with this?
Yeah, so I, I think there, there has been some changes out there. I know. The, I know engaged, I think when he started to build the home, there were some issues with the, the, basically, he had to have. Ownership in, in order to build the home. So that was taken care of. So he is the owner of number seven. I believe nine might have changed. Nine, it's a, it's a trust or it's a. Gate, a gauge actually had emailed out the latest ownership. So I think right now they're just working through. The ownership of each of the parcels of each sibling or each grandchild who's going to be. Taking over the lot. So I think that makes sense. You know, I know. I was confused of who owned what, and it seemed to be a fluid situation over the past year. But I think we're just about there, or I think we're there now. So. I think Matt Gaines needs to update the easement document, the easement document to reflect the current ownership. So that should be taken care of and sent in for review. And then if, I'm not sure, I think Everett's easement figure probably needs to be. Checked to make sure the ownership is all correct on that. And then finally, Martha, are you, will, it sounds like you'll be looking for some sort of document or some sort of. Letter from all of the, from number nine and number eleven. Or the appropriate ownership of nine and eleven, authorizing for this, you know, agreeing and authorizing this application and improvements to the driveway. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that, it, that seems to, I think that's the laundry list now, the, the final list, and we just need to straighten that out and, and take care of it.
And is there anything right that exists that grants Gage the right to use the, the common driveway as it, as it is right now?
Is there anything that grants him the rights to use the common driveway? Well, there's no agreement out there. Basically, those, that, that driveway, that, you know, there's no easement agreement, there's no cross easements, there's no, there's no document on record that. Allows anybody to be, you know, the, you know, eleven to be using a portion of nine, nine to be using a portion of eleven. And now seven to be using a portion, you know, to be using nine and eleven to access. So. But that's, you know, it's an old, it was a three lot subdivision. I don't think it was. I, I don't know if it predated the, the common driveway special permit or, or what, but it just wasn't where, I think where it was a family. And always intended to be a family, it wasn't, it was never, there was never really thought or documentation of it. And, but it, you know, absolutely, you know, like now it needs to be documented, documented and done in the proper manner.
Right. And so that's what Matt will work on.
Yep.
Termating the easement agreement.
Yeah, so. Yeah. Yeah, Matt had, I think he, he, he had sent out, I'll resend it. It was a long time ago. It was just before we got kicked to CBA. He had sent out an easement document, and it was basically a blanket easement that covered everything. It covered the common driveway. And Gage also needs an easement to access from nine onto seven. Where it launches, where his driveway launches off the common driveway to access the, his lot. So there's a, there's a exclusive use easement for him. And then there's a septic, there's an easement for the septic Leach Field on, on lot. On number nine. So hip hop portion of his Leach Field is on number nine. So that document. That document was all includes, you know, it was one, one stop shopping. It, it covered all of the easements, cross easements and everything. And then Everett's easement figure also covered that, the, the exclusive use for driveway and also the septic. So I think those need to be updated and get back, get, they need to be updated and sent back to you. I can't remember Martha, if council, town council had reviewed that document prior. I thought they, I thought she had.
We, we reviewed it. We'd actually been holding off because there were some questions and some, actually some corrections that needed to be made in any case. So. I think what, what would be best would be to get the revised one, and then we can send that to, to council and. Send, potentially send the decision to council for review as well, since it's rather complicated.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good idea, Martha, to send all those documents to council, given the unusual nature.
Right, right.
Of, of this one. So how, okay, so I, I think we're at a point to, oh, it is, it is a, we are in a public hearing, so. Let me ask the board members, Pete, do you have any questions?
I do not, and I think sorting this out makes all this time some steep. Thanks.
Yeah, Woody, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. It needs to be sorted out. They, they need to figure that out, so.
All right, Mary, anything?
No.
Scott?
I have no questions, Larry.
And Steve?
No questions, Larry.
Okay, Martha, any, any members of the public with raised hands?
I don't see any.
Okay, so I'll ask you either Martha or Steve, but both of you, how much time do you think we need to? Get this squared away? I don't know if you muted Steve, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, two weeks might be a little aggressive, I think.
All right.
So when's the, what do we get, April seventeenth?
Yeah, third and seventeenth are the two April meetings.
Let's go with, yeah, where it's only two weeks. This is a short one. Let's go. So, yeah, let's just go with the seventeenth.
That work for you, Martha?
Uh, yes.
Okay, would anyone care to make a motion to continue the public hearing? Until April seventeenth, meeting at seven fifteen PM via Zoom?
You got it.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any discussion from the members? Hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
I vote yes, and I look forward to getting this resolved, Steve.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott, and I vote yes as well. So Steve, thank you, and we'll see you on the seventh.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hopefully we can get this thing wrapped up.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
And Steve?
Thanks. Next item, while under old business, we have nothing, and a new business, we have nothing, and that brings, brings us to the planners, Planning Directors Report, Martha?
A few things. So just wanted to, Ian had mentioned that there's been, you know, or I think. Or you did, a fair amount of outreach on the MBTA. We are planning a few more things which have not been set yet, but we. Are planning to have one more public information session on the MBTA community zoning as well as. Maybe some, some kind of coffee hours, coffee with the planners or whatever to, for one on ones, if anybody wants to come in and. Have discussions with us. So as soon as we have some of these things nailed down in terms of. Dates and location, we will be getting that information out and we'll be putting it on the website. And broadcast that. So there'll be more opportunities before town meeting for people to ask questions. We also have an updated fact sheet that Ian prepared. Which we will be disseminating, be putting fact sheets probably in the library and Council on Aging and some other locations as well. So, you know, people can familiarize themselves with what the zoning is and, and, you know, some, some of it, there are some FAQs. Or answers to frequently asked questions that, you know, may also be helpful. So. That will continue up until town meeting. One other thing I wanted to bring up is we have a consultant who works with us. For compliance with the MS four general permit, which is related to stormwater requirements in our quote unquote urbanized areas. Although our, our stormwater bylaw is in effect throughout the town. And she has done some review of our subdivision rules and regs, site plan review. Conservation and a couple of our zoning bylaws. And so we are going to be looking at some amendments to those documents and. The ones to zoning obviously can't have to be approved by town meeting. So those, it's too late to get those on the warrant for this year. We'll be looking at another date for that. But the ones. Pertaining to our site plan review regulations and our subdivision rules and regulations, the planning board can hold a public hearing to make those changes. So we've just received some updated copies. We met with James and, and. The consultant Renee Boudreaux. From Bordeaux last week, and she has submitted some revised versions. I'm going to ask Joe Sirwodka to review those. And then we'll bring them before you to talk about scheduling a public hearing on, on those. And we could do both, both hearings at the same time. So that's, that's more a heads up than anything else.
Okay. Is that it, Martha?
And that's it, yeah.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is the March sixth meeting minutes, but we're going to hold those till the next meeting. They're not ready. So, that said, would anyone care to move to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? All right, then on the motion to adjourn, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes, and thank you, everybody.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, and I vote yes as well. Yes, thank you, everyone. It's a good meeting.